Call this meeting in order. Please rise to the platform.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. First item on the agenda is Linda Beers.
Can I do a real call?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Harrington. Mr. Merrihue.
Here.
Mr. Gardner.
Here.
Mr. Deepa.
Here.
Mr. Faraby.
Here.
Mr. Blades.
Here.
Mr. McNally.
Here.
Mr. Skazavala.
Here.
Mr. Kanan has been excused. Mr. Pallidi.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Marnell.
Here.
Mr. Whitson.
Here.
Mr. Grinnell.
Here.
Mr. Connell.
Here.
Mr. Glouland.
Here.
Mr. Preston.
Here.
Thank you.
Now Linda, this is not a testimony.
Thank you for having me here today. I just wanted to honor and I have a certificate of appreciation for Ann Merkel. Ann Merkel has been on our Public Health Advisory Council for over two and a half decades. It's the chairperson. This is no easy task. We meet quarterly and the documentation is extreme that she reviews for the last 25 years. She's asked to step down as the chairperson but still remains on our Public Health Advisory Council. So this plaque today is appreciation for her. She was unable to make it but she will be at my PAC tomorrow at 8 o'clock, I'm sorry, later in the day, to accept this award. But I did want to give it the due attention that it deserves for her outstanding accomplishments. So I will just quickly read it. The Essex County Public Health Department has recognized the outstanding accomplishments of Ann Merkel and her tireless dedication to the health and well-being of the citizens of Essex County. In 1986, Ann began a collateral relationship with Public Health as a member of the Essex County Professional Advisory Committee, both of which serve as the governing authority in the department. She has been instrumental to Essex County Public Health Department's mission, working to support the health of our communities by promoting health and preventing disease, injury, and disability. Whereas it's not long before her leadership abilities soared, she was elected by committee membership to the chairperson of the PAC in fact, and she graciously accepted. Ann has served as chairman, try woman, I'm sorry, to the Essex County PAC, FAC, for over two and a half decades, guiding us through some turbulent times, always keeping the mission of public health at the helm. Her accomplishments include advising the agency on professional issues, participating in evaluation of agency programs, assisting the agency in maintaining liaison with other healthcare providers, and chairing meetings and carrying out orderly disposition of committee business. Whereas the Essex County Public Health Department is grateful for Ann's superior ability to mentor, support, and believe in our abilities. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to resolutions.
Resolutions recommended by the Human Services Committee, authorizing the Public Health Department to apply for and accept a New York State March of Dimes grant in the amount of $1,500.
Move by Mr. Blades, second. Mr. Merrihue, any discussion? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Authorizing the Public Health Department to accept a Creating Healthy Schools grant in the amount of $100,000 with Clinton County Public Health Department for a period of five years, and further authorizing the county chairman or county manager to execute a contract for the same.
Move by Mr. Connell, seconded by Mr. Gilliland. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Authorizing the Public Health Department to apply for and accept the New York State Prevention Agenda Award in the amount of $2,000.
Move by Mr. Gardner, seconded by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Authorizing the write-off of bad debt for the Certified Home Health Agency and the Public Health Department from July 2008 to June 2013 in the amount of $152,880.18.
Move by Mr. Grinnell, seconded by Mr. Marnell. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Mr. Blades being opposed.
Authorizing the surplus of one vehicle in the Transportation Department.
Move by Mr. Marnell, second. Mr. Skazavala, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Resolution of condolence to the family of Mara Sogal, Vermont Department for Children and Family Services caseworker.
Move by Mr. Blades.
Second.
And a second, thank you.
Resolutions recommended by the Public Safety Committee, authorizing a budget amendment increasing revenues and appropriations in the amount of $280,990 to cover costs for Belfry Mountain Tower decommissioning.
Move by Mr. Gilliland, second. Mr. Moore, discussion? If none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Authorizing a budget amendment increasing revenues and appropriations in the amount of $5,908 to cover the cost of the removal and placement of UHF links.
Move by Mr. Gilliland, second. Mr. Gardner, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Urging non-support of a 6430 Shafling Bill as unfunded mandate.
Move by Mr. Grinnell, seconded by Mr. Moore. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Amending the Public Defender's Local Law to include the Public Defender's Office handle family court assignments.
Move by Mr. Gilliland, seconded by Mr. Marnell. Discussion? Mr. Manne.
I think at some point, it probably would make sense to have Judge Meyer talk to us about this, his position on it.
That's fine. I was going to say, this resolution is a bit premature to just go amend the local law to have the Public Defender do the indigent representation. I've got a huge file on this. I know all the issues. There's various ways to handle this. We need to take a good look at if the Public Defender's Office would handle these family court assignments. I don't know how many new staff you would need. You have to take a look at what the cost of hiring new people to handle the family court assignments would be, what the cost of their benefits would be across the board so that you have a hard and fast figure on that. As opposed to, in Clinton County, they do this a little bit differently. They contract out with three or four attorneys with a contract with a fixed price, therefore they don't have to pay the attorney's health insurance, they don't have to pay pensions for attorneys because they're not employees. These four attorneys in Clinton County, for a fixed price, they have a fixed number of family court assignments that they handle each month. If they go over that, then those family court assignments are handled through a conflict defender, which is, or no, are handled through the bar association. So there's that option. Versus Public Defender, there's that option. Another option is an assigned counsel plan as we have right now with our bar association. However, we need to tweak some of the issues like travel time, distance, where we can save money instead of hiring assigned counsel from outside. There was a public hearing here last Wednesday relative to, one of the most important issues involved in this is eligibility. How you determine eligibility, the way the statute's written right now is it's blot. You know, the analogy has been made, you know, a guy who's making $75,000 to $80,000 a year who's charged with murder, even though he has assets and money, may not have sufficient assets to provide himself with a viable defense, sometimes they get assigned counsel. I wasn't able to attend that public hearing. I had a four-day trial last week and Wednesday was a full day of trial. There are additional public hearings on the eligibility issue, which I'd like to take a look at. And on October 5th, the County Attorneys Association is going to get together to bat around options and provide a recommendation to the state of New York for eligibility for assigned counsel. So at this juncture, to just go amend the local law would be not a wise move. You need to have everything before you. Judge Meyer would be good to come in. Judge Meyer is the ultimate arbiter of whether someone's assigned counsel. However, if there's an assigned counsel plan in place and that assigned counsel plan has embodied within it certain criteria for whether someone gets assigned counsel or not, then there's a question of whether he's going beyond his province outside of what we have as an assigned plan. So he would be good to hear from, let's see. Franklin County has, Franklin County, Warren County, Washington County, all have the PDs do it, however, if the PDs, if it goes over and above what the PDs do, it goes to a conflict defender office, which Franklin County has. Clinton County, as I said, contracts it out. So there's lots of issues to look at rather than just willy-nilly go jump into this, amend the local law.
Well, does amending the local law, doesn't that just give us the option if that's what we choose? Because I know the preliminary discussions that were had wasn't hiring a whole bunch of attorneys, it was hiring one to try to cut down on expenses. Now, I will say, I had a very brief conversation with Judge Meyer and he said he wasn't so sure that we would save money.
That's what I'm saying.
So.
I don't think one day they'll handle it. It's a lot of assigned counsel.
And then the other thing that I wasn't aware of, that I was educated to, that we don't pay for the attorneys for the children, the state does.
Right. Right. And as I said, Clinton County has a contractual relationship where they have three and I think now four attorneys. Now, these are four attorneys that are not on the payroll. If they were on the payroll, I'd break them. But they came up with this idea of a contract where like say, for $75,000 a year, you guys are doing this, times four, versus two or three full-time PDs or however you handle it, with full benefits, you've got to analyze that. Now, I'll just regress that contract relationship. As I read the law, I don't believe it's legal, but they haven't been smacked yet. So, and I don't believe others think it's legal. But it's been going on for 15 years.
You know, I just think it would be, I agree with you Dan, I agree with Randy too. I don't think it makes it, you know, giving us the opportunity doesn't make that much of a difference. But we have not heard from Judge Meyer in five years, anyway. And I think it's, I think there's more than just this issue, assigned counsel. There's also the issue for discussion of assigning attorneys and where they come from and so forth. So personally, and I don't think he has a problem with it because we've never invited him, but I would think it would probably be a good idea to have the judge meet with us and discuss a couple of these issues which are of concern to this board for purposes of at least educating us in terms of his side of the bench rather than our side. Okay?
Which is a good one. Mr. Gilliland?
I agree with Dan in that, you know, we just have to come up with a strategy because if you take a look at the trend in assigned councils and what we're paying over the last 10 years and stuff like that, it's just about to go completely out of control on us and we have to get a handle on it, either with the contracts, contracts, I mean, just talking to Mr. Preston here, I mean, one full-time PD would be much cheaper than what we're paying right now than, you know, in assigned counsel. But if we get together and talk to the judge, that would be great.
Anyone else have any comments? Do we want to table this until such time we have further information? We have a move to table by Mr. Skazavala, seconded by Mr. Pallidi. Any further discussion? Oh, there's no discussion on the table. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
There were no resolutions from the Economic Development Committee. Resolutions recommended by the DPW Committee, authorizing the Department of Public Works to pay the town of North Elba $45,544.50 with 50% reimbursable grant for the household hazardous waste day from budgeted funds.
Move by Mr. Marnell, seconded by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Authorizing the Department of Public Works to set up a reserve equipment account for money received from insurance claims, scrap metal, and auction sales.
Move by Mr. Skazavala, seconded by Mr. Marnell. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Authorizing a budget amendment increasing revenues and appropriations in the amount of $37,000 for Essex County Soil and Water DEC Storm Water Fund.
Move by Mr. Merrihue, second. Mr. Moore, discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Authorizing the purchasing agent to award bid to further construction for concrete repairs in the amount of $54,900 with $14,900 to come from contingency.
Move by Mr. Marnell, second. Anyone? Mr. Merrihue, thank you. Any further discussion? Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Dan?
I just want to clarify that you can see that the work is going on. And the reason the work is going on is because the portion of it was budgeted and approved in the budget that you, as a board, voted to adopt. So that work started based upon that because you don't need a resolution once it's been approved by the board. The additional $14,000, which we were not aware that you were going to do, is what you're approving now.
Mr. Faraby?
Question Dan, do you know how many millennial feet that was? I don't have the exact number. Chris is here, but I'm not sure. I'll call you later, Chris. Just trying to get a grasp of the cost per foot.
Mr. Marnell?
Yeah, will they treat that with a salt, an agent, hopefully?
Yes.
That's something to do in house, but age here says that's, I need to walk and get.
Chris is telling me they are, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, Dan?
Just want to add to the end of that, authorizing a change order to be executed by the county manager. I know it's after the fact, but so authorizes a change order.
So we're good?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, Andrew.
Okay. Resolutions recommended by the Personnel Committee, authorizing the enforcement of the collection of occupancy tax for vacation rentals as allowed in the occupancy tax law effective January 1st, 2016.
Move by Mr. Merrihue, seconded by Mr. Grinnell. Discussion? Mr. Gilliland?
Just clarification on how we're going to execute this as far as, you know, do we need extra hours, extra people? Is it just going to be Wayne Taylor?
At this point, it is just anticipated to be Wayne Taylor. I know for a lot of board members that haven't been here, the initial occupancy tax, there was no enforcement officer until just recently. And I guess the important part of this is, if there is anything further needed along the lines of enforcement, the tax will pay for it as it does now.
Dan, if you want?
Just as a clarification, I did talk to Wayne about this and he does anticipate that it wouldn't be additional paperwork, but what we talked about was having Mike Diskin's office help us with that paperwork so that Wayne could still do it without having additional help for himself.
And I guess if I may, just, are we planning to have a, you know, a public notice, a public relations campaign to let all the homeowners know that they're going to be paying tax on?
Absolutely. So Pallidi, so as I read this, is this enforcement or is this modification of the law? It says authorizing the enforcement. Why would it say that?
Okay. As I stated, the local law states that a hotel or motel is any facility offering lodging on an overnight basis. And then it goes on to qualify that, including, but doesn't say not, but it's not accepting anything, including bed and breakfast and tourist facilities. So the current local law, in my opinion, because vacation rentals are for overnight lodging and they're regarded as tourist facilities, it's my opinion that we have been, we have had the authority to levy the tax against vacation rentals all along in the local law. So that's what this is stating. What I would recommend that we do is that we amend this resolution. I think you want to include that tourist enhancement fund, right Randy? And so we'll get it all done in one fell swoop? Or done? Are we?
I don't know. I don't know, I don't know how clean that is.
What I would do, what I would propose is that we do amend our local law.
Yes.
To include the definition of hotel motel. And what I've recommended before is, and this isn't going to change things, just what this does is, it gives everybody notice of exactly what we're doing.
Well, I understand that, but the enforcement provision is already in place.
Right.
Shouldn't say enforcement, it should say modification of the law.
Okay, well, we could do that. But the enforcement, because we have an enforcement passage, just shows that we would enforce against vacation rentals beginning January 1 at because, to give everybody a little clue.
I understand that, but the point is, if you modify the law, the enforcement's already in place.
Right.
So the authorization is not enforcing what we're already, we already can do.
Right. Well, I think what, I didn't drop that, but I think what they're getting at there is, effective January 1, the provisions are, the taxing of vacation rentals and those types of things will drop.
I just didn't know whether that was the right word you wanted.
Yeah, no, it's, yeah, no, you're right. I didn't drop it.
All right.
So what I would do is, we amend this to state that we'll revise and amend the local law to include vacation rentals. And that the enforcement with respect to vacation rentals and anything similar to that won't begin until January 1st, 2016. And then, I'll do this as a separate resolution, Dan.
I just think if you do that, Dan, it clarifies it and does not open us up to a potential lawsuit because of semantics as to definitions.
No, I agree.
Make it clear and move on.
Exactly. So here's what we should, the resolution should read this. Resolution amending current hotel occupancy tax by including more detailed definition of vacation rentals, campgrounds, tourist homes, and convention centers, and the enforcement of the tax as against those particularly described items will not occur until January 1st, 2016.
So you're recommending that we amend that, to read that now?
Yes. And Roby's point's well taken, and also, as I said, I believe we have that authority, but I don't, this would make it clearer to everybody.
Okay, so the county attorney has suggested that we amend the resolution.
amend the local law.
The local law. Somebody needs to move it. You move it, Tommy?
I'll move it. I have another question on the definition.
Tommy Skazavala, seconded by Mr. Grinnell. Discussion to be amended?
Yeah, I didn't realize campgrounds. I thought we had discussion on that. The campground, you're actually bringing in your own unit, you are, you're leasing a piece of property, so.
There is a differentiation in the campground definition, which I would make would be campgrounds where if it's a motor home that you bring in with you, or a tent, or a trailer, those would not be taxed. But campgrounds that have actual buildings on.
Right, okay.
Would be.
Would have.
Park units, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Faraby?
Mr. Chairman, in the negotiation, or not negotiation, discussions with roosts, will there be an individual contract with the, for the reimbursements back to each town, per town, or will it be just a county agreement to be dispersed back to each town? There'd be a town roost agreement or a county roost agreement?
I would do both, just as a belt and suspender, so there's no misunderstanding with roost of the way our current, enabling legislation reads.
Further discussion, Mr. Marnell?
Yeah, we talk enforcement, so if someone doesn't charge the tax, Wayne goes there, what, what do we, what are they facing for a penalty?
If it's proven that they have, that they have been not paying the tax or illegally withholding the tax or keeping the tax, it can be a misdemeanor under our law, under our local law. We have, we have one place right now that Wayne came in to see me last Thursday that we're going to go after. It appears, I can't say they are, but at this juncture, it appears that they're a little light in their reporting. Not that they're not reporting, but their figures are light compared to past years. Whereas everybody else's figures in Lake Placid have gone off.
Any further discussion on the amendment? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Now we vote on the regular resolution, the resolution as amended.
Someone want to move it? Mr. Gilliland, Mr. Merrihue, any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you.
Resolution amending the public health department to execute a state of New York master contract for the New York State Department of National Security, relative to contact fee, $1,005.22 for Champlain-Daly water font improvements in an amount not to exceed $290,923 in execution of the MLL with the towns of Crumplin, Scroon, Wilmington, Newcombe, Taconroga, and Oscebo River Association for consultant planning and design services, education and outreach, water quality monitoring, river restoration, and the purchase of supplies and materials incident to the various projects.
Move by Mr. Harrington, seconded by Mr. Grinnell. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Authorizing the conveyance of Hurricane Irene buyout properties acquired by the County of Essex pursuant to the Federal Hazard Mitigation Grant Program administered by the New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services to the various towns in Essex County where these properties are situated by deed and reservation of a conservation easement to the county.
Move by Mr. Whitson, seconded by Mr. Merrihue. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Resolutions from the Finance Tax Reduction Mandate Relief Committee, authorizing the purchasing agent to award bid for bond council services to Hawkins, Delafield, and Woods.
Move by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Skazavala. Any discussion?
Mr. Marnell, can a town use the same contract?
Yeah, there'll be a piggyback in this one.
Yes.
Yes. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Authorizing payment to the New York State Association of Counties in the amount of $15,000 as host county for the 2015 Fall Conference to be held in Lake Placid with funds to come from contingency.
Move by Mr. Gilliland, second. Mr. Grinnell, any discussion? Mr. Faraby?
I just want to, you know, the entire board know that within this contribution, all members of the board, department heads are invited to the conference and within this, the association is waiving the registration fee, which I believe is $190 per person. So it's a gift back for the gift that we're giving them. So I urge everyone to, not only for the educational value, but to, you know, to attend and show the support from Essex County.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Authorizing the purchasing agent to award bid to CJ Brown Energy for Nicerto Services under an energy performance contract in an amount not to exceed $8,289, and further authorizing the county chairman or county manager to execute a contract for the same.
Move by Mr. Skazavala, second. Mr. Merrihue, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Mr. Gilliland is opposed. Thank you.
Authorizing Essex County chairman or county manager to execute an agreement between the County of Essex and the Sheriffs of Essex County Civil Service Employees Association, Local 100, Unit 816, for the formation of Essex County sheriffs bargaining you now.
Move by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Gardner. Discussion? Mr. Skazavala?
Yeah, I can, I can see the need for this, but I'm just wondering if, what if Social Services comes in and says, you know what, we do, it's apples and oranges what we do compared to buildings and grounds. Highway comes in and says, we're on a four-day work week over here, we get a lot of overtime for snow, and so on and so forth. I mean, are eventually we going to end up negotiating contracts with each individual department? Um... Um, I don't believe that would be the case. Again, I think that because the positions that are within those, again, you, when you're talking about a separate bargaining unit, you really have to be talking about titles that are exclusive to that bargaining unit. Um, and what happens is, when you're in DSS, you have account clerks, so you have account clerks everywhere, those kinds of things. But when you're talking about this particular case, you know, you only have titles that are related to the sheriff's department. Um...
Well, let's choose DPW, heavy equipment operators.
Yeah, potentially a DPW could be a separate unit, there's no, there's no disagreement with that. And again, I, I have to tell you that you certainly could take the position that you don't agree and that you, um, want it settled by Purb, but ultimately, all Purb's going to do is look at it and say, did the membership, um, did the petitioners, um, carry out the petition correctly? Did, did they hold the vote correctly? And was there an affirmative vote? And if so, Purb is probably going to approve it. But I, I have a suggestion here, Tom, if you want, um, we can, um, if you want to table this for now, um, I'll go back and I'll get with Dan, and we'll, we'll kind of get together and, and lay out whatever scenarios there happens to be.
Is this, is this something that the entire union membership has to agree to?
Uh, no, it's only the bargaining, it's only the group that wants to split.
I remember years ago, what kind of disturbs me about this is that this is something that was tried at the Horace Nye, and they were told they couldn't do it.
Well, again, here's the tricky thing about this. Management can absolutely not play any role in the process.
I understand.
It's a, it's a violation of the fair labor standards if we even suggest the process to the membership. Um, it, it's an exclusive right of the, of the employees to form whatever bargaining units they choose to do, and management cannot participate or advise, or in any way, um, be a part of the process. So, I, I think clearly there are times when membership may have information that's incorrect or that they don't understand properly, and management certainly could help them with that, but we are prohibited from doing that.
I, I don't disagree that it's probably something that's needed, but I can just see this taken off, uh, because you have so many departments out here and so many different classifications. And, I mean, next it could be the, uh, the emergency call takers, um, you know, who could say, you know, our positions are entirely different than, than any other position in the county. Uh, so I'm just wondering how the membership as a whole feels about the sheriff's department going out.
Yeah, unfortunately, we can't have.
I know, I understand.
Matt, you want to come, come in on this?
Uh, I agree with, with Dan, Tom, um, on, on two fronts. I mean, the process, uh, is if, if they petition, uh, and everything is done properly, Purb is pretty much going to, going to grant that. They have the right to unionize should they, should they wish to. The second, uh, point that Dan made about, uh, the sheriff's department, the corrections officers, they are unique, they do have their own special provinces, their own, uh, special duties, special concerns, um, so they are a bit different. I, I see how you carry it forward. Uh, DPW is probably a better example, the rest are pretty much under the same umbrella. But I don't believe we can prevent it from happening, and I, I think, uh, you know, and this is only my opinion, but down the road, I think it'd be better to deal with them outside of the entire membership because of the differences and issues, and we may be able to reap some benefit, uh, by negotiating with each of these entities separately.
Mr. Blake, you were next.
Uh, actually, my question was, what is the benefit to the county, uh, by recognizing a second bargaining unit?
There really is, I, I don't know that there's any benefit other than we're negotiating with a small group, you know, as opposed to a larger group. Um, there really, there really isn't, in the way the Purb laws is, are, are set up, it's not tended to be any benefit to management, it's strictly an employee benefit, so to speak.
So, if, if, if this body, uh, elected not to vote in favor of this, what's the next procedure?
It goes back to Purb.
And if everything was done correctly, Purb would overrule us and grant the membership. So, okay.
As far, as far as benefits, I don't think there's an immediate benefit right now, but if you're negotiating with two separate entities, uh, but let's say we're not, we don't divide them, and sheriff's department comes up with an issue that really is germane to sheriff's department, and they want it, and we don't, for some reason, we don't segregate it out, we don't do it right, and the rest of the membership benefits from that, or they, or they kind of latch onto it and say, ah, yeah, and then, then we have impasse. I think because of the uniqueness of the sheriff's department, um, we could either have benefits or not benefit, you just don't know, but at least the issues discussed with one bargaining group versus the other are segregated, and you can, you can do some decent bargaining, if that makes any sense.
It doesn't.
It doesn't, okay.
What's the cost factor?
Well, we don't know, you don't know. I mean, you could be benefited by it, it's, it's just that the, the issues are so different.
Right now, I mean, I don't see, you know...
There's no immediate benefit.
Yeah, again, if, I don't know about contract cost, but right now, you're not paying a negotiator anyways, that Dan and I do it through the, the negotiation process. So, you're, at this point, not paying anything different.
I'll vote to table.
Second.
Do we have a second to table?
Second.
Was that you, Mr. Pallidi?
I'll second it.
Okay.
I, so, you know, I don't understand the discussion, I don't believe we're right to do this.
So, we have, we have a motion to table, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
If you're opposed, please raise your hand.
I didn't mean to second the table.
Seconding the table. Okay.
These, these are the hands that are opposed to the table, is that correct?
Yeah.
All right.
So, those table, table. Keep your hands up. Right, table fails. Okay, so, table fails. The table fails, so we're, we're still in discussion, Mr. Kyle, you're next.
Yeah, well, this may not be a legitimate reason, uh, but in my mind it is. Um, I'm opposed to this and understand we're probably going to lose it, but we send it back to Purb. I've sat on the negotiating team since I've been here. It takes a lot, we've spent a lot of time negotiating contracts. If we have to do this with two, three, four, uh, different unions, you're going to have the negotiating team negotiating year-round practically. And, you know, with a county with, what are we, down to around four hundred employees, and splitting off these small units, it's still going to take the same amount of time to negotiate these contracts as it does with a, with a larger group, so, you know. I just don't think we have the, uh, the size county to, um, to legitimize having these small groups break off. So, I understand, it's go to Purb, it's out of our hands, but I want it sent to Purb.
Mr. Pallidi, do you have anything else you want to add? You were next in line.
No. I think, I got, uh, time for it.
Mr. Moore?
Well, the reason I moved it, because being chairperson of Labor Management Negotiation Team, I checked into it very thoroughly, and from what I found out, is like Dan and Dan said, we can't stop it, they want it, we'll lose if we vote against it eventually, and from what I also found out, they have some legitimate reasons for it, because I did do some inquiries about it. And although, yes, we're going to have more to do, but it's needed, and we're starting out on the right foot, because we're being very reasonable by approving it. We can't stop it.
Mr. Grinnell?
No, I, I just agree, there's nothing really we can do about this, it's their right, and, uh, just prolonging, this is not going to do anybody any benefit.
Mr. Grinnell?
I'm opposed to it in principle, but in reality, it's already happened in Taiconroga, we have three bargaining units we deal with, there's no way to prevent it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. Scazafava?
Are there any other counties that, where their sheriff's department is a separate bargaining unit?
In fact, most of them are.
They are, okay.
Most of them are separate. What, between the sheriffs and the...
Thank you.
Anything further? If not, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Did you please raise your hands? Motion carry. Thank you.
Just for your information, from a negotiating standpoint, probably what we would attempt to do is negotiate, and we're at a starting point now, but we'd probably try to do staggered ears so that we weren't negotiating two contracts at the same time.
Okay. Under this agreement, approving a sub recipipation agreement between Essex County and the Housing Assistance Program of Essex County for the two thousand fourteen housing award, project number three, two WS three five five dash four two, in an amount of two hundred six hundred fifty-five dollars from funds received from the New York State Office of Problems in Community Renewal, Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program.
Moved by? Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Marahue. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry.
Approving a sub recipipation agreement between Essex County and the Housing Assistance Program of Essex County for the two thousand fourteen homebuyer grant, name project number three eight two H zero three five zero dash fourteen, in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars from funds received from the New York State Office of Community Renewal, Small Cities Community Development Block Grant.
Moved by? Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Grinnell. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry.
Resolution authorizing the replacement of furnace bridge over Black River Town and Westport Project, and further authorizing the purchasing agent to award bids to the Fort Miller Company Incorporated for the precast bridge for the furnace bridge project, in the total amount of two hundred thirty-seven thousand one hundred seventy-eight dollars, and to award the bid to John W. Sheehan and Sons for the installation of the furnace bridge, in the total amount of six hundred seventeen thousand, and further authorizing the county chairman or county manager to execute contracts in the above referenced furnace bridge project, which funds are to be come from the bridge bond.
Moved by? Mr. Marnell? Seconded by Mr. Moore. Discussion? There is no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry.
Authorizing the project for the Bartlett Road Bridge Replacement Project in the Town of Keene, and further authorizing the purchasing agent to award a bid to Adarandon Concrete to perform site and substructure work for the Bartlett Road Bridge Replacement Project at a cost of two hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars, with funds to come from the two thousand fourteen bridge bond.
Moved by? Mr. Marnell? Seconded by Mr. Pallidi. Any discussion? Mr. Manning?
Uh, just as always, authorizing the county manager and the county, uh, chairman to execute a contract. For work.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry.
Authorizing the big bridge projects that have been approved and completed using funds from the two thousand nine and two thousand fourteen bridge bond monies.
Moved by? Mr. Moore, seconded by? Mr. Moore? Discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry.
Authorizing the chairman or county manager to execute a grant of easement of the Mohawk Power Corporation over premises known as Thirteen Fish Hatchery Road in the Town of Crown Point for the purposes of providing a pole line and high and low voltage electric current to the property owned by the Town of Crown Point.
Moved by Mr. Harrington, seconded by Mr. Moore. Discussion? Mr. Manning?
Uh, because of the exigencies of certain circumstances with respect to trying to get this easement for the Town of Crown Point, we had to act quickly, uh, there was a power pole down that had, uh, uh, cut the power to the, uh, Town of Crown Point Water, or is it Town of Essex, I'm saying Crown Point, Town of Essex, uh, water building, uh, so we declared a state of emergency. It is Crown Point?
Yes, yeah.
The county has declared a state of emergency, uh, and we did execute that easement, and it has been sent to the power company. There's no harm in passing this resolution, but, uh, we did it by emergency.
Any further discussion? Mr. Harrington?
The Town of Crown Point's, uh, water logistics were in a critical situation. Uh, the power was knocked out of, uh, by several ways, uh, with the, uh, severe storm. National Grid, uh, was very difficult to work with in getting them to come to survey the situation at first. When we did get them to show up through all kinds of means, um, they were very cooperative and got us functioning under an emergency situation, but did state that we had four days to correct it because the lines were on the ground. This is how this, uh, resolution transpired to where it is today. So, I appreciate, uh, the cooperation that we received.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the resolution? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry.
There's four more, actually.
I got one.
Bear with us, we're circling the wagons.
Do you want me to just read you one more?
Yes.
There's, uh, more resolutions from the floor, everyone has a copy on their desks. Resolution authorizing the purchasing agent to go out and bid and award for engineering services for the Rome dam project.
Moved by? Mr. DePaul, seconded by Mr. Marahue. Discussion?
This is the Rome dam project. Is it under?
This is under the Community Rising Program. The, um, founder, Jay Keane, um, this was, uh, part of the nine million dollars awarded by the governor to the towns of Jay Keane, uh, for community reconstruction, um, so that's where that, um, particular project is out of.
So, can you just clarify what we're moving here? You're moving, um...
To work bed, right?
That's my trip. Mike, you want to come up and explain as, as we go through it, so everybody knows what we're doing? Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, as Mr. Palmer stated, this is part of the nine million dollars that Jay and Keane received, um, we, we've got a couple of the projects out there being engineered currently, and this would be procure those services so that we can come up with a plan on how to remediate the issues with that dam, and that is owned by the Town of Jay. So, we, we need to procure engineering services, that's what the, the bid should be...
Okay.
Absolutely, yes.
All right. Any further discussion on this resolution? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? So carry. Mike, it's been me.
Resolution to appropriate funds from Circus Horse Project to transfer to the Nutrition Building Renovation Project for the walk-in cooler and freezer, and associated engineering costs in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars.
Moved by? Mr. Moore, seconded by? Mr. Marahue? Discussion? Mike, you want to?
Yeah, I think Ms. Palmer knows enough about this too, but essentially, we have to remediate the coolers over at the nutrition facility, um, we're either going to have to, we're going to have to do that regardless if, if we're able to renovate the entire facility or not. The cost, when we remediate those, those coolers, we're no longer have the existing coolers in service, which presents a huge problem, we need to remain operational, uh, while some of this work continues. The cost per rental of coolers are about two thousand dollars a month.
My recommendation, I think Ben would probably agree, is that it would make more sense to go out to bid and get a price on actually building our own coolers, because at the end of the day, we're going to need to do that anyhow. I'm guessing that the cost of rental would exceed the cost of purchasing our own. So that's why we're looking at doing that right now.
Further discussion, Mr. Marnell?
Yeah, these coolers, would they be independent? They bring them, they have them all set up, and you put them on a concrete slab and put an anchor door into them in the summer?
Yeah, the way the current plans call, we do have some preliminary specs on this. They're going to be in the interior of the building, so we won't have to pour additional concrete, Mike. So there will be... The access will be from the inside of the facility. We will have to remove part of the existing cooler, which is not operational, in order to complete the task. We're not anticipating that the cost is going to be that high. Right now, we absolutely have to complete the cooler. There's no options there. The reason why I'd like to bid the freezer out separately, it may be cheaper for us to do them at the same time, than go back again in six or eight months and try to complete the freezer project. So we'll have a decision to make at the conclusion of the bid.
The only thing I'm concerned if we did or do someday build another facility elsewhere, if they were outside the building, freestanding, then they could be moved to the new facility without tearing them... You know, probably if it's built in, your end is probably going to stay there.
Yeah, we did kind of look at that, and truthfully, the pricing that we got for building new outside was almost 1.8 million. The pricing we got for building a new kitchen onto the existing was around 1.1 or something.
Yeah, 1.1 to 1.3.
And I think we can get that down as well. But ultimately, it appears that the most cost-effective way to accomplish this is to rehab the existing space. So that's the reason for this. Now, the mold issue obviously has to be taken care of one way or another, but in order to do the mold, you have to literally pull the cooler that's there. You've got to rip all the walls out to get to the interior parts of it, because the mold has spread that far. So what Ben's saying now, if we didn't purchase and get a new cooler ready, they would be shut down once we did the mold remediation, so.
Mr. Skazafaba?
On the coolers and the freezer, are there any... Did we check any incentives out there through NYSERDA for the new high-energy, high-efficiency refrigeration units?
There potentially is. That's a good thought. I'll absolutely look into that.
They're doing blown insulation in them now. I mean, there's a lot of changes from the old coolers we remember.
We would certainly research that during the bid process.
Further discussion? Mr. Morrow?
I'd just like the record to reflect that thanks to Phil Sharkowski and Dan Palmer, and I'm looking at this going forestry money. Where do we have forestry money? And then I remembered that Phil and Dan heard about, we had over $400,000 from years ago, many years ago, that was taken and put into a account that was never touched. And to spend that money, you're only going to spend it once because you're not having it again. But I've got to say, I support this, because this, and Mike just said it, this is a program that's very much needed for the agent in our county. And if we don't do this, we won't have that program, the meals program, so this, I will support this. But look at that money wisely, because it's not coming back after. But this is a good wise program.
Mr. Grinnell?
My question kind of ties into Jerry's comment. I was under the impression that the forestry money was dedicated to forestry.
I can answer. Go ahead, Mr. Manning.
How are we accessing forestry money?
It probably is. As part of this resolution, I'll draw the necessary paperwork to get that out of that forestry for this purpose.
Again, the board can always create a fund based upon whatever conditions that they want, but you, as a board, can always change that.
So before regular board, I'll have all that.
So the board is aware that we're changing the forestry fund?
Well, I tell you that the original forestry fund that was created was done in the 80s. So I'm not sure... It was just set up a long time ago, and the money was never touched. There's almost $500,000 that was never touched.
Mr. Skazafaba?
You've got to have trees to put a building up. But anyway, I mean, I agree with Jerry. I think that this, you know, this money was bought, these properties were purchased with taxpayers' monies, dollars, years ago, and I think that, I think this is putting the money to good use, because there are a number of citizens, and there will be in the future. You know, this program, nutrition program, isn't going to go anywhere. We talked about stopping the delivery at one point. We remember the outcry that we had. So I think it's a good use of the money. I think it's a wise use of it. And the whole intention here was that residents of this county benefit that, you know, originally made that investment with their tax dollars into these properties.
The other thing, and I want to point out why we recommended this to begin with. We applied for the $400,000 grant. In order to enhance the grant, you have to be able to demonstrate that you can get more funds without raising the levy. So by using what is essentially a reserve account of $500,000, we may be able to, and I'm anticipating that we will, be able to leverage another $400,000 in grants, because that increases the value of your application, because you are not going to the levy for additional money.
Yeah, Mr. Palmer couldn't be more right. Anybody who's done an application through HUD, it's all about the direct benefit to the clientele, which in this case is the elderly persons in our county. So if we can demonstrate that by them giving us $400,000, that we're not going to have to have an impact on those people that are receiving the service, the better off we're going to be.
Mr. Morrow?
Yeah, and by using this money, we're not taking away from what it originally was put away for, because we've got enough money there. The board's already approved. And all our county-owned timberlands in different towns and woodlots, we're already in the process of getting them all inventoried and the boundary lines marked that haven't been done in the past. And we're still going to be, as we're doing a sale, we've got one coming up shortly, we're still going to be putting a percentage of that money away to help pay for the market and market and market into that timber.
Correct. All in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Poles, so carried.
As a second part of that, I also need to have the resolution authorizing the purchasing agent to bid and award purchasing installation of those walk-in coolers, freezers, according to the projects.
Move by Mr. Gillis, seconded by Mr. Morrow, any discussion? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Poles, so carried.
Okay, the last one that I have is resolution to accept the grant for project number 40850052 from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security for the William Petro Dam Flood Mitigation Project.
Move by Mr. Skazafaba, seconded by Mr. Grinnell, discussion? If not, all in favor? All right, poles, so carried.
That also includes increase of revenue appropriation duty below, budget amendment.
That's what the resolution would be, would be to accept it and to do the budget amendments necessary.
So you have to?
Yes.
Okay, anything else? Mr. Grinnell, did you want to?
Yes.
Have a discussion?
Yes. On your desk today, there's a copy of a resolution that was adopted by Taika Niroga. It was brought forward to the county. There was a request for this a couple of weeks back. I sat and spouted off about the tax cap and the fact that it was actually less than 1% this year, and how that was going to impact all of our communities in our county. And Mr. Preston and Mr. Farabee suggested that I come forward with a resolution reflecting what I needed to do, and that's where this document comes from. It's not a criticism of the state or any officials of the state. It is a request for assistance for communities that are within the blue line of the Adirondack Park. We fall under special regulations because we are the park. And quite frankly, I'm not sure that all of our senior officials in the state are really aware of some of the restrictions that having a park place on us. And this is merely an attempt to bring some of those to their attention and request their assistance from the state as a whole in the financial endeavors that it takes to sustain the park. I just feel it's being unfairly placed on residents of the park, and this is a request for assistance from the state, the governor, and the legislature. And hopefully, we can bring this forward in our next regular meeting for adoption. And I would encourage all my colleagues to take it back to your individual towns and adopt it on a local level.
I will say that I had asked Mr. Grinnell a month ago, when he brought this up, to come up with a resolution, the wording, and so on and so forth, before he brought it back to the board. He's done that. And I will say that I've read this when it was sent a couple of weeks ago, and it was written very well, and it's very respectful. And I certainly will support it. Any further discussion on this, Mr. Farabee?
Yeah, Bill, and this chairman, I have to agree. You know, I've read the resolution, and as Bill stated, it doesn't, it's no attack on the tax cap, it's no attack on the governor, it's no attack to condemning the tax cap. It's only making, you know, bringing more awareness to what it is doing to us as communities and communities within the blue line. And it's everything, I feel, right on target. I mean, we're, you know, more and more state land, and we all know that, you know, when the state acquires land, their portion of tax paid back is not at the same rate that constituents are, and it's a, you know, further cost. I think it's tasteful. I don't know if you're for it, Mr. Grinnell, but you've done a good job. I truly support it.
Does the board feel comfortable moving this today, or do you want to wait till full board? Mr. Marnell, seconded by Mr. Morrow, more? Everybody comfortable with that? Okay, very good.
Dan, what is the actual cap right now?
It's 0.73 right now. We have final calculations. What will happen is we'll have to go in, and any adjustments that will have to be made, because if you have an increase in assessed value overall, then that does...
I understand all that, but it's cost... What's the cost of levy? What's the?
0.73.
0.73.
Yes. And once we make some adjustments based upon the increase in assessed value, that may our cap be actually lower than that at the final.
It's impossible to...
Okay, anything else? Mr. Marnell?
Yeah, I'd like to ask for a resolution of condolences to the family of Dan Riggins, Skunlake. Dan and his wife, God, they've only been residents of Skunlake for 15 years or maybe even less. But he touched the lives of almost everybody in the town of Skun. And his services had to be held at the Catholic church, and it was overcrowded. People couldn't get in. He was involved in every civic organization. A real gentleman. And we had a big loss in town.
We get a unanimous second?
Second. Thank you.
What was his last name, Mr.?
Riggins.
Riggins?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Gillis?
As I said, the last meeting, as a member of the board directors, the Essex County Farm Bureau, we're putting on, as you can see outside, under the red and white tent there, I've got a numbers of farmers and stuff that want to interact with us as the lawmakers here in Essex County. I would highly enjoy everybody to go out there and take a look and talk to them, because they've got a story to tell. In Essex County, we have 261 farms. And according to the 2012 Census Agriculture, in 2012, it generated $12 million in sales, $2.2 million in wages. I don't know if, as many of you know, there's a new energy agriculture in Essex County. We seem to be almost the epicenter in New York for it. Kind of dwarf, almost dwarfing what Vermont has been doing with young farmers coming in. In and around where I live, we've, you know, in excess of 10 farms have popped up since I came here, after retiring from the Navy, Two Come Farm. So you have this old geezer sailor coming up here to farm. I've got two friends, two senior people in the U.S. State Department who are retiring. And they have bought one farm in Chesterfield, Suckashtromes, and they're going to farm up there. Another one, an intern, 53-year-old intern who works at the State Department at the Embassy in Norway, who came up and interned with me today, and is buying a farm in Skazafaba's town. As Jerry knows, you know, in mazachism, there are amazing things happening with people. And there's young people coming in, reversing that trend. They're coming here to take part in agriculture. Agriculture right now, I think in Essex County, is probably a bright spot. It's a growing sector of the economy. We don't have a lot of growing sectors that we have. So what we wanted to do was have them come, talk to you, eat some goodies, take a look what they have, and interact with them. I have a sampling of everything from, you know, the traditional dairy, commercial farmers, maple operations, young CSAs and things like that. So please, take the time, take 10 or 15 minutes, go out there and talk to them, see what they have to offer, because I think this is a bright spot in the future of Essex County, and I would really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Is there anything else to come before this committee? Mr. Harrington?
Yes, I want to reiterate everything that Mr. Gillis said. Also, I want to point out that Gunnison's Orchard is here today from Crown Point.
Oh, yeah, I do.
That's one of the oldest orchards in the country, and they have managed to stay afloat by constant innovation. So that's something that you really need to take a close look at. Also, on a totally different subject, the DEC has announced that the Crown Point State Campsite will close Labor Day. Last year, this Board of Supervisors endorsed a resolution requesting that DEC reconsider the closing date of the Crown Point State Campsite from Labor Day to Columbus Day. The popularity of camping has increased, as recently demonstrated by state statistics that were in the local newspapers. And yet, the state campsite in Crown Point is scheduled to close. For further information, the Town's campsite is filled to capacity and has a waiting list. I'm not sure what the campsites are in Mariah, but I assume that there are some direct similarities to the Town's campsite.
We count on those transits coming from Crown Point, because they close.
We're not able to accept any of the old ones, because we're filled. I wish that DEC would leave on their decision. I know this is late in the day, but we had endorsed the resolution in 2014 in regards to this. So if we would entertain another resolution requesting that the campsite remain open until Columbus Day, you realize that this campsite is immediately adjacent to the bridge, which has its own calling card. It is adjacent to the historic forts, which also has a calling card all on its own. I do not believe that the state has a... I do not believe that the state has a realization as to the value of this area.
So I would take it you're looking for a resolution.
Aye.
Seconded?
Second.
Unanimous second. Thank you. Mr. Grinnell?
Among those lies, it's not just the St. Frederick's Campsite, it's several state campsites in upstate New York. And I just, you know, private campsites are all remaining open. It's only the states that are closing. If the state wants us to be tourist-oriented, the season doesn't end on Labor Day. We should make them well aware of that. And not just at St. Frederick. We should make the resolution to keep all state campsites in the Adirondacks open until it leaves Columbus Day.
Mr. Marnell?
Skunlake has only two campsites on the lake. Both state-owned, they're both closing the week after Labor Day.
Well, the one in Wilmington is open until Columbus. So you want to modify your resolution, Mr. Harrington, that we do a blanket for all state campsites?
I will.
And everybody's okay with that? Unanimous second, Bill? Okay, thank you. All right. Mr. Manning?
We currently have entered into an agreement, a community development block grant disaster recovery agreement with the state of New York. That agreement was that $9 million funding that we're to get for disaster recovery. In the original agreement, don't ask me why, the state doesn't put any money in it. You sign a blank agreement. I guess this is a new way of doing things. Afterward, you get amendments and additions to it that plug into money. Therefore, there are two projects currently being undertaken. One is the restoration and flood mitigation of Gulf Brook. It's for engineering, design, and restoration of about 1,500 linear feet of Gulf Brook. The second one is an Alstapel Forks water building reconstruction and relocation and some work to Rolling Mill Road. Therefore, we need, I need a resolution authorizing the execution by the county manager or the county chairman of a first amendment to that, to the existing community development block grant disaster recovery. So recipient agreement, any amount of $319,460 for this juncture.
Anyone want to move that? Mr. Scazafava, seconded by Mr. Grinnell. Discussion? Mr. Grinnell? No? Mr. Farabee?
Yeah, just an explanation on this. As we move forward with all these projects, there will be a number of amendments. You know, we'll do this part of the engineering, then when the next phase comes in, we go to bid, receive prices. So there will be a huge number of amendments for most projects.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Just one last one. As you know, there is an annual event, the Adirondack Canoe Classic, which is the 90-miler canoe kayak race. In order for the race to occur, the New York State Department of Transportation has to issue a permit. And as part of the permitting process, anyone who has roadways or thoroughfare there have to also give their approval. Therefore, there will be some road closures on Route 28, I believe, however, with detours allowed. In order to, I was just given this and the canoe classic's coming up quickly in September. I would ask for a resolution approving the permit with respect to the 90-miler, subject to any concerns Chris Gueram might have with respect to roadways.
Don't want to move that? Mr. Moore, second. Mr. Gillan, any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
That's it.
That's it. There's nothing else to come before this board? You stand adjourned.